Okay, everybody want ready? There you go. Okay. Um, welcome, everybody. I will call the order of the meeting of the town council study committee for Wednesday, October 30th. I'm glad that I don't have to read the full script anymore for some, I guess that's, I never got the memo, but you didn't have to do that until our public sessions, but um. A reminder to everybody that we are, this is a hard, a hybrid meeting that it is being recorded and anything you say, um, you know. People may have a copy of it, so just remember that.
Nice time.
Um, I presume everybody got a copy of the agenda. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda? We'll move. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
I. Okay. Um. I said that, okay. So we have a um. Well, it's abbreviated, but a um, a just sort of a set of discussion subjects for the meeting today. Um, I did, I should let everybody know that um. Libby Gibson is expected to join us, but um, she contacted me, I don't know, four or five days ago. He ended up with a doctor's appointment at three, so she'll be coming here from the hospital or the doctor's office or whatever. So hopefully she'll be here by four o'clock. Um. Okay, now Anthony, uh, Anthony, Pat and Mel are on board, so okay. Um, the first thing we wanted to cover is, did everybody get a copy of the FAQ that um. Rachel and Jeff did a nice job on assembling.
Doopers, yeah.
Yeah. Yep. Um. Is there, does anybody have any, well. If anybody has any comments that it's for medical, you know. Issues, um, would you please mark up your copy and send it back to Jeff?
Yeah, I've already sent this.
Okay, um, because I think we, I think we ought to.
I'm gonna have a few more.
Um. I, I have a couple myself, so um, anyway, it would be, it would be nice if we could get this thing up on the website, so you know, can we sort of do this maybe in the next week or so?
Yes.
I think that would be great. That was one thing, um. The second interview is um. In Jeff and Caroline and the folks from, from Collins, we have that sort of our little recap meeting to help plan the agenda for the next meeting, but. We did, um, we did talk about the calendar for the next. Couple of months. And. The fact that, um, since we're not gonna be able to make the town meeting for May. Um, we're not kind of in the same hurry that we were before. I was just wondering what people's reaction was to um. Slow down the meeting pace and either have one meeting of, you know, one meeting a month or. Okay. I'm, um. Anyway, and I, and I just, I just bring it up because it, it came up in our conversation last Monday, and I'm just curious what people are reacting to this.
I'm a fan of every other week because I wanna keep the momentum going and I'd rather get something in a. Good draft and then have time to chew it up, so. And especially if we're going to. Try to get something to K P Law. Um. For their review, which I understand we have to do. And to get it on the agenda for the special town meeting that we have to give. Signatures to call.
Right.
So my, my preference is keep the momentum. I think if we go to once a month, we're gonna lose momentum.
Anyway. Um. Yes. Sensitivity to the holidays and then also. If they're meeting more frequently, sensitivity to the Collins Center, how we're utilizing that.
Well, that's actually a good point, because the other, the other fact that people should know is we've got roughly, including today's meeting, five, five more meetings for the Collins Center, sort of on the current contract. Now, I, I would assume that if I went back to Libby and said we needed a little bit more money, she would probably be helpful, but um. The reality is we have five more meetings under the current deal, so um.
And then my comment.
Sure.
Um. I think we should do the two in November or even count this as in November. And then maybe one in December, so we don't get caught between all of these traveling. And then go back to two in January before today.
Okay. Any other thoughts? I mean, I. I'm not surprised, Curtis, I, I. My concern actually is almost the opposite in that if we keep doing two a month. We're gonna sort of run out of things to talk about in like February. And then we're gonna have a. A dead zone, if you will.
We gotta get it to K P Law and, and Libby says that's gonna take a long review, so. I, I would hate to come up and. Give it to them. Two weeks before the. Deadline for a special town meeting. Or we could go to once a month after we have the draft in, and I'm ready to go to. Uh, just.
Alright, well, I mean, we, we don't have to make a decision here today. Um, our next meeting is next Wednesday, so this is, it's not a two week skip, um. And then I think there's maybe a three week break till December. Um.
Why next Wednesday?
Because I'm traveling and I, I, oh, I took sort of chairman's privileges and two meetings.
Oh.
Um. But I don't, we can change that, I just, I just can't.
Next week. And go first of December, I mean. I'm not trying to run the show, tell me, what do you think?
You're not?
I mean, sorry, I know we talked about that a few times. But timeline for a special town meeting again, like when, what are the different?
Yeah, I, I don't know, um, because I don't know. Anthony, I don't know if you're, you're listening in, do, do you know anything, just. You, you're probably the more knowledgeable group on this subject, what, what the. Characteristics or the, the, the rules and regulations to call a special town meeting are?
Um, I'll let Mel, if you haven't wanted to chime in, having done those, but I know, I know Nantucket has their.
Anthony, none of us can hear you.
Process. Hello? Oh, I, I know Nantucket has their own unique process, but Mel maybe.
Let me, there was a. Maybe it's. Uh, right now.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, sorry, our TV got turned down to zero, so. Alright.
Well. I was gonna turn it over to Mel and I was just gonna add the caveat that I know Nantucket has their own unique process in terms of calling these. Meetings and when they want documents, but Mel, you might have more information.
Well, the, the select board can call a special meeting at any time, you know, within, within a certain notice guidelines, but there's no. Uh, specific limitation on that. If the select board will not call a meeting and you. Your citizens need to petition the meeting, it, it will take longer and uh, more signatures, but uh, there's really no. Limitation on the time of the year you can call a special meeting.
Mel, do you know what the sort of? Uh, I don't know, are, are there notice or time limit, you know, timeframes that have to be adhered to, to, i- if you're going the 200 signatures route?
Uh, Pat, you, do you know the timeframe on, on when uh, when they have to call a meeting after, after signatures have been submitted?
I don't know it offhand. I know it's in the mass general laws, but you may have your own timeline built in. I. I'm not sure.
I think it's forty-five days.
Forty, so what, you know, you get the signatures, then, then they, they have to call a meeting within, or hold a meeting within forty-five days or something like that. Anyway, sounds like we ought to get the rules, I don't.
What did we do with the S T R special? Wasn't that a six months lead time or did the select board just set a date?
So the select board called that special town meeting because they. Knew that it wasn't gonna finish an annual town meeting, so they.
Right.
Scheduled it in advance. They could schedule one for any time that they want.
And my feeling is we should sort of aim to the September timeline. Wasn't that when, slash when? I, I don't think you want to pull a special town meeting in July and all.
No, I don't think that would make sense. Um.
Well, maybe we ask Libby.
Yeah, outstanding question to me.
Alright, well, again.
Outstanding question to me is. K P, how long? Like a rough estimate, how long would it take K P Law to relax charter? And then I think that, I know this is just about scheduling meetings, but that feels like the one unknown factor, so.
Right, um, well, that's actually, even that's a two-step issue, because I think the select board's gonna have to approve the review, because one of the issues that they brought up in the meeting, well, that last meeting that I went to was. Review of this draft charter and the county charter is not part of the. Retainer that um. The, the retainer that on. The town pays K P Law, this would be, it would be extra money. And so the select board would have to approve the expenditure, which they would probably do, but. It would just another. You know, bit of administrative steps that have to be.
Well, as the chair, you might wanna follow through on some of the details and, and you're in charge, really.
Well. Okay.
Alright. I take that all. Okay.
Sound like a bear trap.
Yeah, um, alright, so, so just looking here, let, let's wrap up this thing on the, on the, the meeting schedule, so. Uh, the, the next meetings that I sent to Maureen, so there's today, there's next Wednesday, November 6th. Then there is. Um. It's one week. I've got November 6th, then I've, I've got Wednesday, November 13th. Twelve four, December 4th. And twelve eighteen, and then it skips to January. And I would propose hav- having next week's meeting. And then December 4th. And then sort of. Go on, you know, go on hold until January, um, either the, the, the two January meetings that we've already requested are the 8th and the 22nd. Um. So our, our calendar would be. Next Wednesday, November 6th. Wednesday, twelve four, December 4th. Wednesday, January 8th. Except.
So no 13th and Saturday.
Well, yeah, no, well, that's what we're sort of talking about, I'm, yeah, I'm, I'm proposing cutting the calendar back, because we don't really have to be in quite the hurry than we have before.
Twelve four already on the.
It's, I've already, if I can rearrange this with Maureen, but these are the meetings I've already.
I understand, I have to go off island that weekend, but not on which.
Alright, I'll tell you what, I will um. I'll send everybody an email. Twelve seven, eleven six, twelve four. One eight. No word for me. Okay, and then we can, we can obviously plan more or less from there, okay?
Not that. I think that's good to get through the holiday season.
Yeah, yeah. Um, already. The um, as I said, Libby's not gonna show, not gonna be here till four, I think at the earliest, um. So what, what, what I thought we would do at this point would, would be to turn the meeting back over to Anthony and Mel and Pat and um. They've provided us with the front of materials on um. Citizen access and citizen um. Um. I guess um. Input to the, to a town council, um, why don't we, why don't we just? Go through that um, until Libby shows up, does that make sense? Yes, so Anthony, I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, so I'm gonna turn it over to Pat, I just want a sec, I just want to address. One question, I think you guys kind of touched on a little bit earlier, so at the last meeting, there were some questions about the draft, um. We sort of sent over a whole draft charter, and there were some questions about the red, there were whole sections all in red. Um, so just to clarify for the committee, so those red sections were sections, we sort of put in um. Um, basically, we think of sort of non-controversial language, um, that we would sort of just assume would pass um, the body, so if there are any questions on the red sections. You know, feel free to raise them either through emails to the chair or. At a meeting, but the assumption is that those are sort of boilerplate, um, based on where we are currently, um, with uh, the progress of the charter, and I'm just gonna. Share my screen briefly. Is um. We've, we've got um, the administrative organization section pretty much done, we're waiting to hear more from uh, the town administrator. Um, so the sections we have, and we're about to talk about citizen participation today, which is Article 8, so the remaining sections are Article 6 and Article 7 on elections, and then. The last section that we do in this process is um, the transition article, so there really are only sort of three articles remaining, assuming that there aren't um. Sort of special articles related to the um. You know, that Nantucket, that, that, who's the committee may consider adding. Um, as well as the county charter, which we'll review at the end, that'll be the last thing that we do, so just to give you an idea about where we are. Um, I'll pause here for any questions, if there are none, I'm gonna turn it over to Pat to start the discussion on citizen participation.
I'm. Just reminding us about a question received regarding proprietors, if the select board. Members are proprietors, also Nantucket and decided. Decided to your end in.
Yeah, Anthony, I don't, I don't, I didn't send it to you, we got, or maybe, I don't know, I don't know.
I.
Did you, okay, do you have any comment on that um? So Lee, Lee Saperstein?
Lee Saperstein, sorry.
Um, had an issue about whether the select board also acts as the proprietors of the town of Nantucket, I. It's a, it's a. Responsibility or, or a function I'd never heard of before, but.
I did, I did see the email, actually, I don't, I'm not sure if I circulated it to the rest of the team, but I did some, I looked, I did, I did some research on it, I couldn't find. What the legal definition of that statement is, I mean, there, you got the charter and then you've got. The state law which defines the, you know, these roles, the proprietors is, I, I guess I'd. I was thinking of sort of turning the question back to the requestor, perhaps through you, um, where are they looking, where they're getting this term, because I. We didn't really find, I didn't really find it anywhere, but we didn't, I haven't had the whole team look at it yet.
Okay, um. I can certainly. Um, you know. Send it to you. You said.
It, no, it's part, it's our history, it's how we, uh, how the island was originally held. And I, I, I don't know that much about it, but I'm assuming that. As the government shaped itself. Over time, we maintained. That idea, the concept or the role of proprietors to keep close to our. Founding um, members.
And I also suspect it's like the town prior, I mean, it's probably a. Ceremonial thing at this point, but.
Well, the original. Proprietors were ten people. And then it kept subdividing because each proprietor. Um, would have the right to inherit, and then their kids kept subdividing and, you know, it, it's like a splitting of cell, you have. A proprietor who now has. A thousand.
Descendants.
Descendants. But they all come from the original. Charter of the island. Which was the ten proprietor. That, it may be, as you say, like a town prior, sort of a history tradition, not the legal definition. Lee is very precise. And uh, maybe go back to him and say, can you show us a citation so we don't miss it?
Yeah. Okay, I'll do that. Alrighty, um, I'll take on the. The job to contact Lee Saperstein and get a little more background.
With, with that, I will turn it over to Pat.
Thank you, Anthony. Um. Just to give you an overview, we're going to start in on a discussion of some resident participation me- um, measures that are common to charters. Uh, we gave you a memo in advance and I'm gonna put it up on the screen in a second and kind of go through it, um, step by step. There are a number of decisions you'll have to make. Some of these require a certain amount of signatures to get through, some of them have multiple stages to the process. Um, I also gave you a chart. Which shows some of the choices that you can make. Um, I started this by, um, I used the twenty twenty census because I wanted to compare it evenly throughout other communities we look at. Um, but in twenty twenty, there were fourteen thousand two hundred and fifty-one residents. Um. And right now, there are um, nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-two registered voters, so when we start talking about percentages. Um, we can talk about. How many voters this really means. Um, so that you can decide as a group what you think is reasonable. Um, I want to preface, preface this all with telling you that you're really looking individually at what is reasonable for the town. Um, and. In today's world where it's much easier to get signatures by um, the use of social media and say, everyone show up and sign at a certain time. Um, you, you may want to take that into account, that it may be easier to get signatures now. Um, than in some of these comparable communities that we discuss, because some of these may be older provisions. But in any event, I'm gonna start right in, um, I'm gonna put it on the screen, I think you all have copies as well. Um. Let's see here. And I'm gonna ask you to tell me if, um, at the top of the, the screen, it says open meeting of town voters. Okay. So hopefully you're seeing a document that starts with section eight point one, open meeting of voters. Um. And so. Where we're starting in is something that's somewhat of an unusual provision. Um, but one that we're seeing more and more interest in, especially where there's a conversion from um. A town meeting form of government to a council form of government. And this is called open meeting of the voters, it's also sometimes called town hall, um, and this simply requires uh, for, upon. The written request of a certain number of voters. Um. Then, at that point, the town needs to hold. An open meeting to discuss a specific matter. There's no requirement that they come to a certain decision on this, uh, but this does. It's, it's, it's more substantial meeting than simply a town council meeting in that they're expected to bring the people of note who would understand this. Um, to. Uh, to make them available and invite all of the residents to discuss a matter. So I guess the first point, this is something that was originally brought up, I think someone noticed this in a, in the Barnstable Charter. And. There are, um, in Barnstable, um, in order to hold a town ca- a town hall or an open meeting, um, they require three hundred signatures. A couple other places have this, um. North Attleboro, a hundred voters, and in Amherst, two hundred. Residents is what they say rather than voters, so I guess the first thing is, I'd really love to hear, because this is going to be your decision. Um. Your decision of what to recommend. Um, this is really a time for you to discuss what you think you might be interested in. So the first question we have is, is this the type of meeting that you're interested, including and including in the charter? So I guess I would like to give you an opportunity to talk amongst yourselves about whether this is something you want to include.
I mean. That comes, um, Curtis, I think it's essential that we do this, because I think the public. Wants to be sure that if they're concerned with a decision by the council. That they can with um, sufficient number, call a, a meeting to discuss the decision, so I really think it's important to include it. And I go back to the two hundred, which I think Barnstable has. Um. But we'll, we'll add three hundred voters, but no less than two hundred voters to sign the petition.
Anyone else, thoughts? Go ahead.
Um. Without this, is there? An alternative mechanism to get a meeting focused on one issue? Somewhere else in the charter?
Absolutely, um, the, something that is similar is um, the next section we'll be talking about, which is free petition. And that is an opportunity to get a matter heard at a town council meeting. So um, that is specifically for a town council meeting, and as portion of the meeting, it might not have exactly the same singular. Um, discussion of one issue, but that's another opportunity to get a matter in front of the voters. And in front of the town council.
Well.
Um, I support this as well, but I would. Caution that two hundred voters seems a little low. And. That the logistics of it might be. You know, similar to putting on a town meeting, so. Maybe we go higher. On the number. No problem with it, and maybe make it a percentage, because as we grow. Just make it a percentage, like if you do, maybe do the five percent or. Three percent or four percent or whatever you think of.
I. I had this, I had the same reaction that a hundred and fifty. Seemed like sort of a low hurdle, except that of the. You know, from the, the, the table. Seems like that's sort of the common number that people, that towns are collecting, or it's over three hundred, I mean, you've got three hundred in Barnstable and two hundred. Uh, this is the free petition. Hey. So. You have it, but what is? We need to say, I don't know. Oh, it's here. Okay. Go ahead, let's.
Joe, chat, Mr. Chat.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Yeah, Don, I'm sorry, Don, you go first and we'll go to you.
Thank you. I think this would satisfy a lot of people's interest in a, sort of like a, a mini annual town meeting. So it would might reassure people that yes, whenever there's a, a major issue that comes up. Um, we can have an open meeting of the voters.
I just think you want to make sure it's major enough, I mean, if you, if you set the, the signature thing, you know, far too low. It will, it will get tripped a lot, and I'm not, I'm, you know. I don't want to sound like I'm anti-democratic, but, but part of the idea of all these signature hurdles for the, for the various parts in this uh, section are. To avoid having to do, you know, special meetings every time. Somebody gets a little too twitchy. Um. Curtis.
Um. Am I correct that both? The um, section one and two are for informational meetings, they are not. Legislative functional meetings.
That's correct.
Well, it's really information that people want to hear more about it, you know, and I, again, I've experienced that in Barnstable, I know it works.
Go ahead. Um. I think. I'm all, I'm all for the more vehicles for people to access. Our municipal. The. Yeah, municipal functions, the better. It does seem that there is a little bit of duplicity here and like for kind of. Simplicity of the voters and understanding the different mechanisms to access that way, if they almost serve the same purpose. Why not get rid of, you could almost get rid of one and move group petition to one hundred and eighty voters.
Well, and I think that part of what. Pat is going through here is, I don't think all these things have to be, we don't have to select all these, this is our option to recommend in the, as part of the charter. You know, the open meeting, the free petition, and then some of the other, the referendum, so. Maybe, maybe Pat, it would be worthwhile to kind of um. Keep moving through these various uh, options and then you, then we can kind of continue to talk about.
Absolutely, we can, we can do that. The other thing I wanted to mention. Um. Is that some of the communities, um, with respect to the open meeting of the voters include school committee issues as well. Um, so that is something that's not generally included in free petition, so um. Uh. Some include, you know, if there's an issue and they want to have the school committee have an open meeting, um, and so we would also talk about when we make a decision on this, and. You know, if. We, we're not necessarily gonna get through all these parts today, I mean, all of the decisions today, although we can move through the parts, so there are some. There are a couple of other things that you can decide, and do you want this process to include the school committee as well? Um, but I will move on to the next one and you can keep that in the back of your mind. Um, section eight point two is a free petition section, and this. Similar to the open town hall um, section would allow, would require with a certain threshold number of um. Signatures would require town council to have a public hearing and. And act with respect to the petition, so while it says act with respect to every petition. It doesn't mean it has to, it doesn't prescribe a certain action that it has to take, but it has to hold a hearing and discuss it. And decide the action may be to take no action, um, but to. It's a little bit more specific than the open town meeting in that it's not purely for discussion purposes, because you've convened the legislative body, they could take action at that time. Um. So that's the free petition, but starting out, if you look at section A, um. It simply starts out by saying that they, the town council and school committee shall receive all petitions signed by one or more residents concerning a matter. Which means they have to receive and accept these petitions, you know, and it's, it doesn't mean they have to do anything about them. But that there has to be some sort of mechanism in place by which um. By which residents can submit information, I mean, and that's pretty basic. Um, and that's already occurring right now, but so it's, it's almost boiler point at this. Um, stage, but there has to be a record made when people submit a petition. Um. So section B talks about. The town council shall hold a public hearing, so the action required is that they must hold a public hearing and act with respect to any petition addressed to it. Signed by at least, and, and I just put randomly put in one hundred, um, although that it may be more in other communities. Um, voters as certified by the Board of Registars, this hearing shall be held by town council. Or by a committee or subcommittee thereof, and the town. Um, council shall act not later than three months after the petition is filed with the. council shall act not later than three months after the petition is filed with the clerk of town council, so within three months, they must hold a hearing. And the hearing must be notified to the ten of the petitioners will kind of represent the group, so they know what date the hearing is going to be held, et cetera. The town councils shall publish a general summary of the subject matter and a notice stating the time. When you can expect inspect the group petition, et cetera. So this is very standard language and and I wanted to let you know that what we do even more particularly in the resident participation section is use language that has been approved by the legislature or the attorney general. Because these provisions are very particular. And so we don't make a lot of changes. We don't because want to make sure that this is something that the legislature would be familiar with if it comes across their desk. So if things are worded in a way that, you know, might be a little unclear, we can try to make it a little more clear. But we're generally using standard language to avoid confusion. So this is, this is a section where we can talk further on about, do you wish to include a free petition option? If included, what is the number of signatures should be required? And does the committee wish to establish this process for the school committee as well? Most do not. Well, I would say maybe ha- only half include this process for the school committee as well. But it's something that you can talk about. Our language here, usually the town council and school committee are included in the resident petitions where only one, you know, that they have to accept it. But the school committee is not generally included in the group petitions, they have their own processes that they follow. So if you look at the chart for this free petition article, pretty much everyone has it, not everyone, but most of the communities have this free petition included, others do it more informally. But and and the signature number varies from fifty to a hundred and fifty. For all of these, your goal is to, if you decide to include this, make it possible, but possible to go through with this on an important issue, but not so easy to go through that it disrupts the normal proceedings of the legislative body. So I want to stop and ask if there's any questions on this and maybe the best way to go forward after that is to just kind of explain every situation and then we can come back and talk about threshold numbers.
Okay, Caroline?
Thank you. I'm wondering if the difference between free petition is that Pat, you said that there would have to be action taken within, I think you said three months, so either it could be taken at the at the meeting that's convened, since they're convening the legislative body. But it but it sounds like it's for the express purpose of getting the legislative body to act within three months, if not on that day. Whereas the open town meeting or the town hall. That's more just to host or have a discussion and the legislative body may not be there or is also there?
The legislative body is there. But they need not. So the president, as it says, the president or chair of said entity shall preside and regulate the proceedings. Generally, they are there, but they don't necessarily take action. There are generally more bodies involved. Anyone who may be relevant to whatever their issue is, is invited to the meeting.
So the difference between the two different things is that one is more pointedly to for the resident, for the voters to get the town council to take action. Whereas the other one is more a conversation, more informational?
Yeah, it could be interpreted that way for sure, and that's generally how it's used. There are, there's definitely some overlap between the two. Obviously, if a matter is of that much concern, some action will be, you know. Just in general, the council will take, often take some action, but yes, that's the general difference, although there is some overlap.
Thank you.
Okay, Curtis?
My feeling is that we should not include the school committee in these descriptions. I don't think we do that now and it looks like we're imposing something on the school committee that isn't there, so I deal with the council.
Anyone else?
A hundred seems to me like a good threshold. But I
For for the petition or for the town hall or town meeting?
No, if we're talking about the free petition, I I would say that a hundred signatures seems appropriate and I support it. I agree.
I'm just curious, you guys are, Bo, you were saying that there should be more for the open meeting. And less for the free petition?
Yeah, just because the open meeting requires logistical, we have to to audio and the space to use it, and obviously the space is pretty, but you know. It's not the full extent of town meeting, you know. You know, paperwork necessarily, but it is going to take resources to put on, so you might as well have like some higher threshold. You are just talking about an issue, you're not just there's no legislative action taken, you're just talking about it, I mean, you can block the box. It's pretty clear, everybody just lined up and just started talking, and that was it.
Except that on the on the free petition, the the town council could decide, they could take, I mean, at at the discussion, at the meeting that they all discuss things, they could take a take a decision and support whatever the heck's being asked about. Or they could also say, oh, this is all very interesting, but we are, we're not making any, you know. We're not coming to any conclusion, we disagree and sort of table the issue or whatever, whatever that.
They have to respond in three months.
Right, but of, well. But in three months, they could say, that was all very, very interesting, but we disagree and we're not going to take any action on it. They don't, they don't have to do what the people who signed them, the hundred people who signed the petition were like.
There are instances.
But that, but that, but that's a decision, as opposed to the open meeting that's just a discussion.
Yeah, there are instances where that body might stall on something because they don't want to deal with it. And so they might need a kick from outside to deal with the issue. There's definitely that going, that goes on currently, so. I get where this is going, we kind of need this.
Check and balance.
Yeah.
But you think a hundred is enough for that?
You mentioned in the beginning, Patricia, you mentioned in the beginning. Because of like signatures are easier to get. Was that, should we take, should we take that in consideration? And raise the threshold for vote to for signatures or lower because they're easier to get?
You know, I I think that you understand your community, you know, better than we do. So I guess I would think, I would look at it as keeping in mind that, it depends, one hundred is not an impossible number to achieve. You should be able to get that fairly readily on an issue that has acquired some traction in the community. I'm not suggesting you have to raise it or lower it, but if you take a look at what some other towns have used. And you know your community, whether it's an active community where it would be easier to get petition, you know, signatures and not. So I guess what I would say is, I'm not saying you should increase the amount, but just know that it's possible to achieve that amount. And and not not necessarily lower, make it too low if it if it's that easy to achieve.
Thinking when I lived in Cambridge, you always, you'd have to really like go hunting around and getting people. Depending on what time of the day or what neighborhood you're in. Whereas in Nantucket, it just seems like it's easy, you're walking around town, you're getting breakfast, it's just much easier to get, talk to a group of people.
Well, and I was just gonna say, don't forget, you know, Nantucket sets records for the number of I don't know that for a fact, but it is known to be a town that produces lots and lots of citizens' art. So we have a history of people liking to get things on the town meeting agenda. And I would argue that we ought to take the open meeting, you know, limit up. So that it's even harder to get a open time meeting, because I agree with you, it's a big logistical hoo-ha and I would, I would make the petition one hundred and fifty, I would, you know.
I said two hundred.
But even on the chart, a lot of the people with the population, you said our population is fourteen thousand. So a lot of the ones that have a hundred and fifty have a significantly higher overall population than us. I agree with you about taking the school committee out for sure. I would, my my question is, do you know why Amherst chooses to do residents and not voters? Is there any understanding why they're they're not requiring it to be certified voters?
Well, you know, I, I would probably want to ask some of my colleagues who actually participated in that charter. But Amherst has a lot of student population as well. So I'm not sure whether they were intending to sweep in students who might not be voters. Or, you know, that's one possibility, but they have, you know. And I'm not sure how often this is actually brought up. It may be that there's less civic interest in Amherst in getting, you know, because there's such a transit because there are so many students and they might not necessarily go to these meetings. So I think the population is high, but there's a lot of students included in that.
That's sort of what I was thinking, so I I I certainly agree, I think we should keep both of them. Even at the forums, we heard a lot of reaction to that that was positive, to have some form like the open meeting or some ways. I mean, that was a really big concern for a lot of people and having more than one avenue, I think it's a good idea. I certainly think the free petition number might be fine, but the other one should be higher than one fifty, I I don't know. I mean, I'm not married to any number, the three hundred sounds fine, it's, well, I'm just thinking along the ways like Amherst did, it might make sense if we have a large non-voting population that is also wanting to have some input if they were able to be a part of calling in open meeting for discussions, but not necessarily for the free petition, which is on a specific matter. So we're curious about that. But I think keeping them both long would be much better received.
Yeah.
No, I I agree with Rachel, I think having the options for citizen participation are important. And I, you know, I I think part of being an active government is, if it looks like it's overwhelming or too much. The council can certainly come back and say, we need to talk about the thresholds for this, just for the fact that people are filing these on way too regular basis, right? It's not a one and done, I think they can say, we need to go from one fifty to two fifty, or if there's a swell of voters, they could certainly increase it to that point too, to track in that, but I think providing for citizen engagement options, especially given the transition from what we currently have at the city.
Clarification question. Ob- obviously, anyone, any member of the public, not just voters, can come before the new government at any time, and they can say their piece, I'm not sure if the government has to respond to them. When someone does one of these, we went to a warrant article or whatever we're calling it, little signatures. What does the new government have to do when it's presenting these? Do they have to acknowledge it, listen to them? How is that different than the member of the public just showing up at the meeting and talking for five minutes?
Pat, did you hear that?
I did. What will happen with town council is they'll establish their own rules about who can appear. And in what order and for how long and this this and what shows up on the agenda. So these are additional protections. So for example, if someone's only allowed to speak for two minutes. Or if there, or if someone decides there's no room on the agenda for a certain article, I mean, for a certain subject on a certain night. This is an opportunity to kind of have more focus on an individual on an individual issue than just showing up at town council, which will always still be the first avenue, probably.
So Joe, this becomes an answer to the frequently asked questions. And how can I get in front of mine and go, right, this is a second way away from the show.
And this requires attention to a specific subject as opposed to just commenting.
Right, but as but as I read eight point two A, the resident petition, basically, you know, it's the same as showing up and wanting to speak in the open comment session. You can get up and speak your piece. And then the the town council can say, thank you very much, that's very interesting, next speaker, they don't have to do, they don't, they just have to receive it, they don't have to do a thing with it. It's the way it is today. Well, yeah, yeah, and then it's, but then, but then they put a group, which which has gone to the effort of getting however many signatures. Has to be dealt with more formally and the town council has to make a decision, yes or not. Which I think makes makes sense to.
As if both of these are addressing an issue, specific thing, in other words, I want to talk more about lighting. It's not coming in and saying, well, last week I didn't like the guy who drove down the road too much. So I think both of these from my perspective are aiming at specific areas for questions, not just saying another chance to speak before the council, which is always there on anything. These are more focused, as I see it.
Thanks, Lauren. Okay. Pat, why don't we, Libby is here. You want to, you want to try to do the eight point three and then we'll switch over?
Sure, in fact, what I'll do is I'll just give like a one minute on each route, so we use, so you can get through them all, so if that's okay. And then go to Libby, that way you'll hear a little bit more about them, since we won't finish. I just want resident initiative measures kind of kick it up a notch. There'll be a signature requirement with, for a specific action taken. So it will be the language of what they hope to enact. And then it's referred to an attorney to make sure that what they're asking for is something that can legitimately be granted by the council. The council has to act on it. And if they refuse to act or if they act in a manner opposed to the petition, it would then go to the ballot. So we'll be talking about next time, probably different thresholds at various stages of this process. So this is like the, like the free petition, except that if the action if no action is taken or if contrary action is taken, then the matter will go to the ballot. For voters to decide, so. I'm going to go through the next ones really quickly, because we'll talk more about these, but I want you to understand what they are, so that we have good understanding of it. The voter veto procedure is also called a referendum. Is an opportunity for residents to take an issue that's been decided by the council and attempt to overturn or reverse it. So with a certain number, certain threshold of signatures, most often it's five percent. Then, they, they they ask the town, they essentially ask the town council to reverse it, if not. It goes, it does go to the town attorney to make sure that the matter is ripe for a reversal. And then it will go to the ballot, so it's an opportunity to have something overturned that the council has put in place. The next, and usually there's a list. The next, and usually there's a list, and we've provided a sample list that many use of ineligible measures. Because, for example, um, you don't want the whole budget overturned. Or appropriations for the payment of debt or debt service. There are certain matters that are just necessary to the functioning of government that are accepted from this. Um, to, so to make sure that there's no, um. To make sure that the government can continue to function and it's not, there aren't obstructionist referendums being, um, bring, brought to the ballot. Um, eight point six, the council on its own can at any time submit a matter to the voters. Um, and that's generally included in most charters. We, we have some boilerplate that talks about conflicting provisions. So for example, if you have two measures on the ballot and they contradict themselves, then the one getting the greatest number of votes takes effect.
Have the greatest number of votes from the town council, right?
No, from the ballot, at the ballot. So say, for example, um, you know, you put something on the ballot saying that we're gonna put a stop sign at a location. And that gets a hundred votes. And you put something else on the ballot that says we should put a yield sign there, and that gets two hundred votes. The one with the greatest votes, um, is the one that's enacted. Um, section eight point eight is a recall provision, and we'll talk more about that and whether that's something you're interested including in your charter. And, um, that is an opportunity to recall, uh, elected officials during their terms. Generally, um, you exclude the first six months and the last six months of terms. Uh, because you've just had an election or you're about to start, you're about to hold another election. And, um, that's, that's gonna be it. We'll talk more. I, I want to make sure you get to talk to Libby. So we'll talk more about this at the next meeting and you can start to think about what thresholds you might want to include. But thank you.
Great. Well, thank you, Pat. Um, good comments, everybody.
Is there a recall provision in our current charter? Yes, there is. Okay. So it's not inconsistent with those.
All right.
Never found it.
Ms. Gibson, you ready?
Yes, there is a republic. Um, so I don't, I don't know.
You're, you're welcome to, to.
I don't know if you're asking me stuff, I'm going by the.
Anthony, were you gonna, um, go through some of the, the questions in terms of appointments or how, how do you want to work with this?
So I'm gonna turn that over to Mel. He's, he's been sort of taking the lead on this administration portion. I did email Libby last night. Sort of an updated list of our questions and, and, and we'd actually had an email exchange before, so she's, I think she, hopefully she's fairly prepared. Um, but I'll turn it over to Mel to lead that discussion.
All right, thanks, Anthony, and hello, everyone. Hi, Libby. I, I, I think that just, uh, some context. So we have created this, uh, council manager, um, charter. Or drafting a council manager charter. And when it comes to the town manager, the executive, um, function. We have, uh, created a fair, fairly standard, um, section article on the town manager. And it's a broad, provides the town manager with broad authority to supervise and manage the affairs of town government. And provides the town council with approval, or in some cases, disapproval authority. Um, the area that we are a little stuck on and we, we, we need some i- input is on those. Those departments or those boards and commissions that are, at least under the current charter, are referred to as in or out of town administration. That, that term. We have not used that terminology in the new charter. We, uh, assume everyone's in and then create an exception, uh, provision. And so, uh, the committee has requested that, uh, this new charter. Uh, continue those similar exceptions that exist in the current charter. And, uh, I think, you know, we've, we've raised a couple of questions about, about it. I think you indicated that. Uh, park and recreation, you know, was in, was in or was out, and, you know, we need some clarification on that. Uh, also, uh, the, the current charter, I don't believe talks about the library whatsoever. And, um, airport excludes, and so, uh, what we're really trying to do is, um. Is if there's any confusion or, uh, anything needs clarification, it's a good time to do it now. The committee, uh, I think has been clear that it wants to retain the same kind of relationships and the same kind of. Exceptions that currently exist in the charter. And, uh, so that's what we're dealing with right now. And so, um. I guess, I guess the question is, uh, you know, the first one is, um. Do you have any role? I mean, currently there isn't, uh, it says that the, these exempted departments hire their own department heads and so on. Do you have any practical role in that process? Uh, let's say for airport or, or the, um. Or, or the park and rec.
So, um, first of all, park and rec is part of town administration. And it's confusing, because in the original charter, it wasn't. There was a subsequent amendment which put it in, but it isn't in an order that makes it obvious that it is part of town administration. That was a prior town council, um, advice. So it is in though, because there is wording, um, in the charter that says park and rec is part of town administration. So, um, and, and really, what is park and rec? It is a division of the Department of Public Works. The park and rec manager is a position that reports to the director of the DPW. And I would most likely be involved in a final decision to hire that position. The director typically would come to me after a hiring process had occurred. And I might be involved in a second interview, which I was with the current hire. And they would, he would come back and, or whoever, and say, I recommend so and so for the position and I would sign off. So that's park and rec. And there's also a park and rec commission. The appointments to which have been delegated to the town manager by the select board. And so that is subject to the, um. Resolution of disapproval by the select board. And as are all of the other committee appointments. So they're one of the groups that I appoint. The airport and the water commission and the school department, school is really more statutory than the other. But the other two do not, they are outside of town administration. That is clear in the charter. Is the town manager involved in hiring those? Directors? Not really. With the airport, I will say, the most recent manager prior to the current individual. Um, I was invited to be part of the review, of the, um, finalists.
Interview.
Thank you. Interview. And it was, it was a series of exercises that, that took place. So, but I was, um, involved in that and they let me express questions and opinions and things like that. Um, the water department manager, I have never been involved in.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna assume that park and rec i- in our new charter will make it pretty clear that, that it's not exempted. From any of the provisions of the town manager's authority. And airport and water will, will remain in, in that exempted status. The current charter says that, um. That staff of these departments shall be responsible to, to the town manager only in matters of the town's general administrative procedures. But not as to substantive decisions entrusted to such board, council or commission committee. Are those, um, termin- is that terminology, uh, okay with you? Or do you, do you see that there's distinctions? And, um, do you get involved, for example, in, in purchasing or any, um. Any other administrative matters?
So this gets a little bit, um. A complicated might not be the right word, but there are certainly, um. Times when the airport and or the water commission. Or the managers of those departments, supported by their commissions, um, authorize certain personnel. Authorizations or decisions that are not. Consistent with the rest of the town. So that has been an issue. They know this has been an issue. They have not indicated any, um, inclination to really be consistent with the rest of the town. So it, it definitely causes some issues. The select board off and on over time have had some discussion. About whether or not prior to the town council study committee and. Probably prior to any most recent government study committee, have talked about, should we amend the charter to put them in? And there was a lot of pushback on that. So it really wasn't, it really didn't proceed. But I would say that general administrative procedures are kind of up for interpretation. By some of these groups. So as a little tiny example. They all are, not the water company anymore, but the airport is, has, um, a union contract. And most, uh, and they have a number of non-union employees. And it is not outside of normal practice for the non-union employees to receive. Bonuses or other compensation that no other non-union employees get. And they are not really part of the compensation and classification structure of. All the rest of us. So that's kind of an issue. Um, but it really hasn't been, uh, taken up, taken on.
Do, do you feel, Libby, that, I mean, talking about the airports and the water commission, do they have sort of a political? A backing? I guess what I'm thinking is, let's say we actually went forward and we have a vote to convert to town council study committee. Now, there's an option, there's an opportunity to say, well, we're gonna fold the airport enterprise, you know, uh, division. And the water commission in, and, and we're gonna combine the water commission and the sewer department to make a, you know, in, in fact, we could do that. But I, I, what I'm, so what I'm asking is, are there voting, voting blocks or citizens block that, that represent significant, you think, significant? Sets of voters?
I don't think the voters as a whole care that much about this. I think they probably would say, yeah, they should all be treated the same over, overall. I think it's more, um, the commissions. For whatever reason, don't think they need to. Be part of the program.
And, and the history is just that they're, they're independent, just. They're as independent as they are because of the history of how all this is evolved.
Right, and the water commission was a private company for a long time and it became taken over by the town in the mid to late eighties. And it, it took a while for them to really get a little more integrated. They're more integrated now than ever. Um, but not one hundred percent. Um, airport tends to. Assert some level of independence. For federal reasons, and I'm not sure that how, um. Overly, uh, valid that is, but it sort of starts up and everybody says, well, we have other things to do, so we're not done.
And what about sewer? Since sewer commission is part of the select board, what would happen to the sewer commission?
Um, well, I don't know what you all are planning for the sewer commission, but the sewer department is squarely under town administration.
Yeah, we know that, but, but you, you act as a sewer commission though.
Well, they, the, since it's all the same people.
Yeah, I.
Um, the select board as the sewer commissioners has nothing to do with the personnel.
It's just a department.
It's just a department. And it is, it's structured there in a, the same union as the Department of Public Works employees. And, um, it all is fairly consistent.
Let me, what about buildings and facilities? So, uh, obviously these independent entities have a lot of assets. Buildings or a facility, do you have any control over those or do they, um, make all the decisions related to those?
I would say they make all the decisions relative to those things. The town really doesn't have anything to do with the facilities of the airport or the water department.
I mean, other, well, except that the, the full faith and credit of the town backs all the, all the debt of all those entities.
Yeah, I'm, I'm meaning more like maintenance and payment bills.
Well, if somebody wanted to rent it, for example, uh, they, they would have that capability to rent, rent something out or.
Of course, but, yeah.
Okay.
And they do have concessions. The airport has some concessions that they. That, that they, um, put out for bid, and they also have quite a bit of land. That they, um. Put out procurements for from time to time.
Joe. Jeremy?
Quite, and so it sounds like the two agencies have a non-centralized governance.
Yes.
Um, due to historic factors. And one could view these as vestigial organs. What, is, is there a different way of. Describing whether or not there is an issue, either economically or. Time wise or some other way, other than saying there's a historic, you know, well. Decentralized governance issue? And it could, if it were all centralized, let us say, would it be more efficient? Would it be better? You know, what, what's a better way to think about it possibly?
I don't, I wasn't really, I didn't give that a lot of thought. Um, I'm quite certain that they would argue they're much more efficient as it is. Um, and, you know, sometimes that might be a little true. There are a lot of, the, there's a lot going on in the town. So if you're not doing your procurement or your bargaining or whatever yourself. It, it could take longer than you want it to take, because that's how it is in a large organization. Um, is it a real hassle? I, I don't know if it's a real hassle the way it is. It's sort of the way it has been. But it does tend to raise itself when there are these personnel matters and there is. Unrest among all the rest of the employees when they see that airport and water employees are getting. Raises and bonuses that they aren't getting. So what we hear from them is, well, why don't you give them that then? Just make, just bring them up to where we are. Well, it doesn't really work like that. And we have a compensation and classification structure. That was developed recently for the non-union staff and. There's internal parity issues and, you know, a couple of people go off the grid on that and the whole thing has to be reevaluated. So, so we try to avoid those, those things. But I'm, I'm not quite sure what the other, one other way to look at it is. Um, would it be more efficient? I don't, I don't know.
May I make a comment? As a water commissioner.
Yes.
We raise salaries after the town did their whole program. To meet the level that the town set. The water commission did not go ahead of the town. We waited and saw what you did and then responded on the same level. So, you know, we weren't trying to get ahead of the town. We were letting the town take the lead in that particular instance.
I, I might say that possibly is a recent development, but it is not the way it's.
That's because you have great water commissioners now.
I have great respect for the.
Can I, so, sorry. If, like, right now with our town meeting warrant, if they have any capital, things like that, they're in the town meeting warrant. So that goes to town meeting floor, but that would then have to go to the councils. So. I mean, is that where that?
Well, right, right now, um, the select board adopts the warrant.
Yeah.
So if there were a situation where, um, I'm gonna make this up right now, this is not factual. Where either the airport or the water department had a capital item. And the select board wasn't supportive, they don't have to put it on the warrant if it was a standalone article. If it was a capital article that was part of the enterprise funds capital. If it was a capital article that was part of the enterprise funds capital. Article which simply, as you know, in the warrant, it says to see what capital projects there would be for enterprise funds. Forget the article number. And then. Those items go in the finance committee motion. So. The FinCom could, and I I think it has happened. Sometimes, occasionally, where they don't put in a capital project for. It could be somebody even other than water or airport, but. They don't have to put it in.
But that's just related to the enterprise fund accounts or do they have separate? So I guess I'm just trying to figure out if town meeting doesn't exist, what? What would come from the airport and the water that would have to get voted on at town meeting floor that would now have to shift to the council?
Well.
And would that be a check? Or some way to incorporate them?
I assume that in the new charter, there's going to be something that addresses enterprise funds.
Yeah.
And indicates how their budgets and capital projects get approved. And it could be sort of similar to the way it is now if. Water, say, I'll use airport because they're not here.
Okay.
If the airport wanted a project.
We're a lot simpler already.
You are a bit simpler, that that is true. If if the airport had a capital project and. The the town council didn't agree with it, I guess they wouldn't, it would never get approved. Because it's going to have to go through a board that's not the airport commission.
And so that would be a check on the airport because they would have to modify their condition or somehow lobby the town, the town council.
I mean, there is sort of a check now with the FinCom, they would, FinCom wouldn't have to put it on. And although there there have been times when the FinCom has put it on. I'm trying to remember if there's been a time when the airport submitted a citizen warrant article. Because that would be a little workaround to get. To get definitively on there, but.
And Jill, did you have your hand up?
Uh, yeah, well, I'm glad Libby's raising this point because we actually have this now where the airport wants to build housing. And they are, they have a dorm that they're building on Nobody or Farm Road. I'm sure you all have seen that. And then they come to town meeting, they come to the capital committee and then they come to town meeting. To ask for money, basically just to borrow against their own money. But what they keep telling me is that they don't have to do that. Because they don't really like when we were kind of talking to them about. How they, you know, who they can house and they're saying they can only house. Airport employees and we're trying to encourage them. They have a five acre parcel and we're trying to encourage them to work with the town. On employee housing and they're adamant that they can't do that. But anyway, this is for a longer discussion. But I just want to let you know, there are definitely issues there. I think. My question is, aren't there towns that don't have enterprise funds or we, do we have to do that with the town council form?
No, enterprise funds are throughout Massachusetts government and I I I'm not really sure that they're. Governance issues, they're more financial. Procedures, I think. It doesn't create any independence in terms of governance, as far as I know.
Okay. That they're, they're definitely, there there's. It's definitely not really clear how the airport works and how they work with the town. And, you know, they keep telling us, hey, we don't have to come to you, we have our own money.
I mean, I I would like to think that, and I mostly do think they're they're. They're cooperative. I'm not saying that they are not. When they really want to get something done though, and when it comes down to the use of their funds. They have some legal standing with the FAA. And how their money is spent and there are, and that is, that is a legal. I don't even know what the word is. Jump into that and good luck trying to figure out.
It's a loophole, it's called.
Well, it's kind of that, but but it's also, there's a lot to it because you certainly wouldn't want to spend. Money on something that the FAA comes along and says, we need that money back because you didn't spend it right. Because a lot of it comes, it's not town taxpayer money, it's federal government money specifically for airport purposes. And you can stretch that a little bit, but.
Can I ask one more thing about that though, Libby? Because that's a really important point that. One thing no one ever seems to be able to nail down for me and the others on our committee is the town land. It it seems like the town owns the airport land, but the FAA governs the airport land. And then they have these designations between aeronautical land and non-aeronautical land. And it seems like the aeronautical land is the land that they really want to, the FAA wants to governing. Control and maybe the non-aeronautical, there's a little bit more. Wiggle room for the airport commission. Does that seem right? That's kind of how I understand it.
Yeah, that about sums it up.
Okay. That that's where we're, so they're putting their housing on this aeronautical land and we're kind of like, well, why didn't you put it on non-aeronautical land and then? Could have worked with everybody on that. So that's what we're drilling down on, but it's very complicated.
Well, it's, it is very complicated. Not to get, this is not a governance issue, but the land is becoming more and more difficult to figure out. Where it is because of mitigation issues and. Things that are beyond governance, but they, it's not like there's a whole lot of land that we can just do stuff on. It's it's encumbered with one thing or another.
And the airport, I should note this, but the airport commission and the water commission are elected.
The airport commission is appointed by the select board and the water commissioners are elected.
That's an interesting dichotomy in itself. They don't report to you, but they're appointed by you.
Well, not me, but.
Well.
Well, so that presumably in our model, the town council. Town council, town councillors would be the appointing authority for the airport, which would be another way to sort of. Hook them in or control or have some political power and then the water commission are elected, so. Alrighty, Mel and the and the folks, Anthony and Pat, any any other questions?
Yes, yeah, there's there's still a little lack of clarity on town clerk. And the library F N E M. So town clerk is not included or excluded from town administration in the current charter. It's obviously an elected official. Do you see it as as one of those exempted groups in terms of your authority to appoint and to direct?
Um, I would say currently, yes, because that position is elected. Um, I will say that the town clerk's department goes through the same budget review. Personnel review, because it's the personnel that isn't really independent. The 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 staff members of the town clerk's office. It's really just the town clerk that has some amount of independence. And as we all know, it's very much governed by state law. Ultimately, I I don't know why that position would not become appointed. Like every other town position, it's just sort of a holdover from the days when. The town clerk, the tax collector, the treasurer, all those things were elected. But currently, I would want to emphasize, it is not a problem with the incumbent at all.
Library, that's unusual one.
Yeah, it is a little bit unusual. The library is not a town agency. Is a private group run by its own private, independent, nonprofit board of trustees or. Something like that. They get town money. Six or seven hundred thousand dollars a year. But we have no jurisdiction over them. They are not part of the town.
And do you have conditions of appropriation so that you're sure, you're assured that it would be. Expended and how does the Department of Revenue look at that?
Well, it's subject to a particular mass general law. I don't have it memorized, but there's a law that says they get a certain percentage of. Some amount of money. And they and they get that. They get whatever the statute allows. And do we track them down and make sure they're spending it on the library? No. I I kind of assume they are. They also do apply, as as do other nonprofits, for CPC funds. And they are pretty successful at that. They do a lot of. Doing some painting right now and some other work on the building. It's obviously historic. So they don't seem to have a problem getting funds to maintain their building.
Are they, if you say, if they're not a town agency, are they subject to like open meeting laws and public records laws and those kind of things?
No, I don't believe so. They're not on our insurance, they're not, they're not. No, they they're they're central about.
Thank you.
They're not a public body.
Is Salt March independent like them?
No.
Salt March is a town.
The Nantucket Council on, the Nantucket Center for Elder Affairs. Is a private nonprofit. The Council on Aging is the town appointed. Group that overs, sort of oversees the senior center. They make recommendations for the use. The N C E A. Currently owns the building, the town owns the land, but the town, for all intents and purposes, runs the program.
Is that something we need to look at in the charter?
I don't really think so. I don't really think.
Figure out where to go.
Yeah.
I mean, I.
They're a good advisory group.
I mean, I I think that falls under the category of trying to change as few things as we can and make the voter's choice as straightforward. Okay.
So, while we have a look here, maybe we should ask about the proprietor question. And then we asked about.
Just more name was Lee Saperstein to ask this question?
Like proprietor's road.
And so that needs to be mentioned in the new charter, but I don't believe.
It's not in the current charter.
Yeah, it's not in the current charter. I I don't know why that would.
What was the question?
Well, we have the chair of the select board here, maybe, did you know that you were a proprietor of the town in Nantucket?
I don't think anyone believes.
I wear a lot of hats. That's a hat I don't have any on the hook that I'm aware of.
We need, so you need to ask Lee where his.
Okay, I'll have to go back to Mr. Saperstein and find out where the. Anthony, your hands up.
Mel, I don't, I I just want to interject with a quick question to to Libby, which was on the. Two questions on the town clerk. One is that under the current charter. They appoint the assistant town clerk and two, under the current charter, they make recommendations to the appointments of the. Election registrars to the select board. I'm curious if that's, if that currently, if that accurately reflects how the process goes right now.
Yeah, yeah, I I would say yes, that I'm remembering now. The town clerk does make recommendations on the registrars to the board, select board. And the assistant town clerk is really kind of treated the same as all of the other staff for all the departments. Appointed by the department head but requires the approval of the town manager.
And and by the way, that's the way we have continued to express that. Appointment authority in the in the new charter.
Any other questions for Libby or subjects? The, you're number two. Sorry, go ahead.
The sewer and water bills are combined. You have a sewer department, it's a town department. And the water company that's an enterprise. Why do we do that? Is there a better way? Should the sewer department, because you're going to have a hearing on raising rates? Should they be billing independently or is this a matter of convenience? I'm just curious how we got there.
It's probably a matter of convenience and I would probably say just leave alone. The. Sewer, it's it's based on water usage as. It relates to your sewer.
Yeah.
System in your house, obviously, if you're connected. So that's the connection and that's why they're probably on the same bill. Because it makes sense that your use of sewer in your house is related to the use of water in your house.
What if there is a sewer line but a well? Does that come?
That I think is a flat rate, sewer flat rate, so it's, that is not connected to your water use, obviously, because you're not on top water. So there are a variety of different situations like that, all covered in different ways of.
Is there any reason the charter has to think about that at all?
I I don't think so.
Okay, I don't either, but.
I don't think so. I did want to mention one thing. We we do have, I I don't know if we want to list these in the charter, but we do have a number of of standalone departments that have been added. Since the charter was adopted that are not listed in the charter right now. And those include housing, solid waste, human resources. Sewer, information technology, human resources, natural resources. Visitor services is now called culture and tourism. So at some point, we might want to work those in. D I is a division of town admin.
Yeah, she said human resources. Services and human resources were.
Human services part of it.
Health and human services.
Health and services. I mean, the problem with with identifying departments in a charter is that when they change and they will change, then you. Have to petition the legislature again to modify it. So we. We want to be careful about that. That's why we're unincluding who was in town administration because, you know, that could change and.
Yeah, I mean, I I I agree. We've added all these departments without any charter change. It just happened, but maybe there's a way to make like broader categories or something like that or.
Was there a way through the charter to create a provision that? Town administration could just create new departments?
So in the administration provision, there's a whole section on the reorganization process of creating, adding. And so we don't, we don't usually recommend listing these discrete departments or committees in the charter. But we do put in the process of who has the power to create and reorganize and what is the process that the person or official would go through.
That makes sense.
The the current charter does say, nothing in the charter mandates that continued existence in any such town admin department or continuing center of department name or function.
Great. Oh, did you have, I'm sorry, Jill, yeah, sorry, Jill.
Yeah, sorry. And sorry if you mentioned this before, but I didn't hear. The performance reviews at the enterprise funds, do they do those themselves? Is that separate from the performance reviews you do, right?
Correct.
And then what about the plus office?
Oh boy. Well, the planning director. As you've probably noticed, is not listed in the charter because that. Position is appointed by the Nantucket Planning and Economic Development Commission. Regional planning agency, which is outside of the charter technically. So the planning commission handles the. Performance of the director. And the director, through the memorandum of understanding that the select board and the planning commission have. Reports to town administration for the. Administration of the departments in plus, building, energy, zoning. What else is over there?
H D C.
H D C, thank you.
But not the director.
But not the director.
So you do those for everyone except the planning director?
I try to, yes. Well, you mean the departments in plus are done by the director pursuant to the M O U. And actually, we don't, I I don't want to go too far down this road, but. I'm I'm specifically speaking about non-union employees, not union. There are, most of the employees in plus are union.
Okay, and so does she do their reviews then?
Well.
Or she's.
As needed. I I would say as as needed. Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
But don't we pay a very large percentage of the. Planning director, the lessly salary?
Well, that's, yes, the town.
State grant.
But there's a state grant that covers the transportation planner and. That grant also covers a portion of the director's salary and the deputy director's salary.
Small proportion.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the percentage is.
So ninety percent. Of the reporting isn't to you, but ninety percent of the money is ours.
That has been the situation for. That has been the situation for, um, ever, but yes.
Where the money comes from a state grant.
Ten percent of it.
Ten percent of the money.
Ninety percent comes from our.
But, but, but that's, that's a, a note that I really don't want to, at least, I don't, I don't think that's. Well, more time and effort that would be expended on that. I'm not sure we'd.
I know.
Anyway. Um, terrific. Libby, thank you very, very much for taking time out of your schedule and coming to talk to us. Um.
Do you, should, does Libby want to say anything for us that we should?
Oh, um, well, uh, yeah, I do, uh, actually. I would, I don't know how accurate this is, but I've heard that there's. Possibly the idea that the town manager should appoint. A bunch of current boards, committees and commissions. I, I don't know how true that is, but I would say, um. I would more beg you to rethink that. I, the, the charter now, uh. Allows the select board to delegate the appointment of boards, committees and commissions to the town manager, and I have been delegated. A few, park and rec, visitor services. Advisory committee of non-billing taxpayers and there's, I think there's one more. Um, and it. You might not really think this, but it's a bit of a process to, to make the appointments. So I can't even imagine how the position would manage the appointments of. Everybody that go, they currently go to the select board now, like once a year in, in June for the appointments. And if there's a thing, a thought that it's either, it's maybe less political if the town manager does it, I, I, it doesn't matter who appoints it. Someone is going to say it's political. So, please.
Well, that's helpful. That's why, you know, give us the feedback and help us do a good job too.
Thank you.
Does the chair of the board of selectmen have any comments for the comment?
No, but the chair of the select board does.
Uh, I'm sorry. Yes.
I can't help myself.
I, 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 I apologize. I beg forgiveness.
That's okay. I, uh, I tease everyone who does that. Um. I have heard through the grapevine that, uh, there's been a representation that the chair position of the select board is ceremonial in nature. And I want to make it clear to everyone that it is not ceremonial in nature. Uh, when I was appointed chair, elected chair in May, my inbox doubled overnight. And as you can imagine, with everything that's happened with the wind turbine blade and everything this summer, I've been working more than forty hours a week. And, and, and the bulk of that was because as chair, I'm coordinating a lot of things. And so, um, I think there's a reason. Nobody in Nantucket keeps the chair job in perpetuity because it's a lot of work. So I just wanted to debunk any. Notion that it's purely ceremonial.
May I correct that?
Yeah.
Um, everything you said is correct. But, um, uh, for example, in Barnstable, the president, elected annually. Has as part of the job, a ceremonial function as the town manager and the. Chair or president has a ceremonial function within the multitude of prospects. That was what I think we're saying. That is, if we want someone to represent the select board. As a groundbreaking, the chair and the town manager normally would be the.
Terrific. I'm glad to hear that clarification because.
Yeah, there was, there was no.
No, no, no.
No one here said that it's a select board.
Your tail.
It was purely ceremony.
Five minutes after it was.
Okay. Um, so anyway, I just wanted to say that. And I want to say that it is actually the ceremonial duties of the job are some of my favorites, to be honest with you, including. Libby now going into conditioning of the USS Nantucket in a couple of weeks and I actually get to read three sentences publicly at the event, which. I find is a huge honor and I'm delighted to, to be.
Well, I was trying to get Father Max to go to do the blessing and he will be out of the country because. Holly Manila, uh, is a parishioner at St. Paul's. So we've got a very tight connection there.
Terrific. Anyway, that, that was really all I had to say, and I really back Libby on the appointments thing. I, I, I can't imagine diverting. The amount of her time to that job. It, it would be extremely inefficient. Um.
Okay. Well, it's, it's something we're going to have to talk some more about because I think the. The typical structure is when there is a town council, that all these various commissions and boards appointments are done by the town manager. So. Um, well, I'll think about it.
Well, the assistant deputy town manager.
Well, there might, I'm, there's probably some other way to organize it. I'm sorry.
I, I think it was also in response to with the town counselors coming in, being elected and, um. I think there was a feeling on, on our committee that. The institutional knowledge or the wisdom would be held by. The town manager across, looking across everything and would be, be able to be in a, a balanced position to make the appointments. I think that was. Am I referencing this correctly about how we came up with that? Um, whereas Libby is saying that that would be too much for that one person. And so then the question becomes. Would we feel confident in town counselors to? Make those appointments? And if we don't, why not? And now what to do about that? So I think we go back to have that conversation.
But Libby, I presume administratively, you collect the applications and prepare the packages that go to the select board and, um. So you're, you're already, it sounds like you're already doing a chunk of the work. It's just the, the decision and the interview process and the final interview process and the decision ends up being at the, at a select board meeting.
Yeah, like I, I talk to every person that I'm going to appoint and it takes a little time to set aside for that and. Difficult enough to schedule in. The three or four committees that I have now, and they don't, you know, they're not all of the ones, so that's good. But add in thirty or forty more committees and, and especially something like CONCON. No, thank you.
Well, I think there was also a, are they strictly advisory or do they have any?
Yeah, like advisory. Sure.
Recognition.
But regulatory is.
I'll, I'll just say, since you guys always have been here, we even had talked at one point about whether regulatory board should move to. Maybe not be appointed and be elected, but I think we default it back to keeping it appointed. As the smart way to do that.
Mm-hmm.
But regulatory boards have definitely bounced around a little bit discussion wise for how they are constituted.
Okay. Good work as a.
Yeah, can I just comment on that? I attended an MMA webinar in, um, increasing community participation in government. Four or five weeks ago. And one of the things that, um, elections really restrict accessibility to people. Being able to serve in town, in municipal government, government. There's a, there's a cost to running an election campaign. Um, and whether you're fundraising for that or not, there's, there's a cost to that, right? Time or money. Um, it's a barrier to entry for participation. And I think in a community of our size. Having more elected positions is actually restricts who, who can actually. Put their name in to serve. Um, so I would encourage. Fewer elected positions from that if we're, if we're looking to, to get broader representation in the community and have more people participate. Um, running is, is a, it's, it's a, it's a financial barrier and it's also. Running for office is just, it's, it's, it's a lot of work. It's, and a lot of people who don't want to put themselves out there in that way. Shaking hands or standing at the dump for days on end, um, who are just shy and, you know. Won't ever. Might be excellent members of a board or commission regulatory or not. Um, but we'd never think of participating if it was, if it was an elected position. So. Well, that's my two cents.
You're not.
Big Chris. Oh, I'm sorry, Jeremy. I thought you had been, I had a question for Brooke. On this barrier. And one of the ideas that we've talked about, but it's skirted down soon a bit. Is how much should people get paid if they are elected to this? And there is, uh, one body of thought that says it's sort of volunteer, not a heck of a lot. Another body of thought says, well, Brooke works forty hours a week and then it doesn't even take into her mind share the other so many hours a week. You work hard. And so you got the, the market driven guys on one end and then historic volunteer guys on the other end. I wondered if you had a perspective on that because. Love to hear it.
I've already articulated it, um, several times and publicly in meetings, so I'm not afraid to do so again. Um. Uh, I think that in an environment where the cost of living on Nantucket is what it is for younger people. That we're never going to get engagement unless people have the privilege of a flexible job. A trust fund. They're self-employed. Um, to be able to serve in this capacity. And I think if we don't compensate. At least enough for it to be someone's second job. You know, most people here have two jobs that, um, we are limiting the pool of people. Um, frankly. To people who look like the group in this room. And. Um. I just, I, I have made this argument. I've heard people say it's not a good argument, but I can tell you. We have a current select board member who. You know, would make a real difference to them if there were more compensation. And I think the ability to volunteer. To work twenty to thirty hours a week is a privilege that not a lot of people have. And I would seriously consider compensating, making this position if we go to town council, a job. And then you have expectations around that job. But if you're going to, if you're, if, never mind the select board. You're now asking people to be the legislature of the town. You're asking them to replace citizen legislators. And to be educated on everything around running the town of Nantucket and to know. What to vote on, on a, on a waste option, a, a waste. Operator contract, what to know on what the budget for human services should be, what to know on union negotiations, what to know. You're expecting people to, to spend time learning about every aspect of the government. Because they are representing the entire community and making those decisions. I think asking people to do that for free, in essence. Is a mistake and I think it extremely limits who, now I may, I may be proven wrong. Maybe the same people my age. Will still be the people who do it, but I think we should make it at least potentially possible for a mom who has kids. Who, you know, really wants to serve and needs to pay for childcare to be at meetings and to do all the things that we do. So that's my two cents.
Thank you. Well, we appreciate that. I can, I can certainly tell you the sense of the committee to date has not been, um. This is going to be a volunteer kind of role. I think, I think we certainly based on. Comments like that and, and Tom, of course, is a member of the committee and has, has shared with us, you know, the amount of time he spends. So. I think we're all, all very interested in, again, because all this actually goes forward, comes to pass, making it a position that is, uh, certainly at a minimum, that kind of second job would be.
Thanks.
Um, but thank you, Brooke. I appreciate you coming. Um, any other? Comments? I, I want to thank Libby, um, for taking time today and actually coming to the meeting. Thank you for the support that you've both given to the committee, um, enabling us to. Inspire the talent group. They've been, you know, they've been terrific. So appreciate it both.
No problem.
I'm, I'm thinking, given that it's quarter up, we ought to adjourn unless anybody has any. Other subjects.
Can I ask you one? Or because, um, the select board talked about next steps on this, right? And, uh, I can tell you that I'm sort of of a mind of, I think. To affect this change requires a gory deal of education to the community. Uh, I, I don't know. That it's reasonable to expect in the timeline that like ATM is going to be. Um, you, Joe, you, when you can.
Yeah, no, I, I, we, I think we've already, you know, realized that based on all the communications we've had, that we're not going to make, we're not, this, this article that we should come out as, we're not going to make annual town meeting. Um, you know, we, we have discussed the issues of a sense of the meeting vote at town meeting and we took, and, and the other counterpart of a sense of the ballot vote, um. Uh, the town, uh, election. Different opinions around the committee as to which of those were both, you know. Um, I'm, I'm personally less thrilled with the town meeting one, but, but we have, we really haven't come to that conclusion, but, um. But, and then the others, the other side is, you know, when, because, um. We recognize that the, the warrant for May is big and there's some big issues on it and we're not going to be, not going to be one of them. But I'm also concerned, and I think the committee would share this, um. You know, if we wait to town meeting twenty six, that's a long time, uh, for, uh, you know, sort of keep the interest in education and communication levels up for. So the thing that we have talked about is, um. Either petitioning the select board or gathering signatures to get a special town meeting to, you know. Uh, and I just could save anybody the balls. Like this.
So, so my, my thought is you've got two different constituencies, right? You've got town meeting. That, that's going to vote away a town meeting. So. I think a sense of town meeting is critical to knowing if there's, if there's, I mean, there was a vote to study it, right? And then there's a, when the rubber hits the road, hey, town meeting, are you going to vote away? You're right. You're, you're, are you going to?
Are you going to vote for Thanksgiving?
Are you going, are you going to, um, assign your, right, your vote to someone else? Um, and if, you know, if that's a, if that's a like eighty percent no. Then you have to ask the question, you know, do we, and, and then the ballot is a different constituency of people, right? It's the. It's the constituency that a town council form of government is seeking. To show up and elect town counselors, right?
Right.
On that very limited time expectation. So I think here is to do both and see if there's a difference. Cause that might be interesting data.
I think the committee will, will talk about that.
That's why I brought it up.
Okay. I don't think if it passed, we would do the councils right away. Is that what you just said?
No, I'm just saying, like, like if, if, uh, if there's a difference between voters at town meeting and voters at the ballot and, and the percentage of people. Who like, ask the same question in both places, right? But different people show up. To town meeting than show up at the ballot. So it's really, it's really a sense of, is the community even really ready for this? I mean, that's what. As a select board member, I kind of want to get a better sense of that. I'm not sure the vote to create a study committee. Is the same as that. I think it's sort of the next progression in assessing the temperature of the community around. Wanting this change.
And then it might be our job to, in order to get that, to increase. Public interaction with us, the idea of the concept.
How much selling do you have that you need to do?
Well, I, I will, I will share, and this is anecdotal, not evidence, but I have, I mean, I'm speaking for myself here. I have been surprised, you know, we've had two public forum. Twenty-five, uh, people showed up in person and on Zoom. Um, there were a handful of. Individuals, voters at each meeting that, you know, said, Leo, what, what about, why don't you go down the route of representative town meeting? Oh, town meeting's wonderful. We ought to keep it. But many, many more people were like, great, I'm all for this. This is terrific. And. You know, that in, in my circle of friends. There's, I haven't had anybody tell me to keep town meeting. I mean, um, there are an awful lot of people who don't want to go to town meeting and would love this lead changed. Now, the problem is. The anecdote don't, don't, doesn't tell you what the numbers go where you are.
Well, and you got to make sure they, that they're going to come to town meeting to approve this someday. Which is the thing they don't want to do.
They'll go to a special town meeting because it's focused, but the same old people go to annual town meeting, the same crowd. Goes every year. And that's maybe not representative of the sense of the community. The ballot makes some sense because it's broader. Numbers are two or three times, sometimes bigger.
But town meeting is the mechanism to.
Understand.
So.
We have to get through that hurdle. Anyway.
Anyway, so that's.
Great conversation. Thank you both.
It's worth it.
Um, any other comments from the group committee? Motion to adjourn?
Yes.
I'll move. Fall of favor? Hi. Uh, Anthony, Mel and Pat, thank you so much for your time today.